Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Tuesday, June 4th, 2024. At 4:00 PM, this is a meeting of the Board of Selectmen, and we're motioning to call the meeting to order.
So moved.
Second. Call those in favor?
Aye.
This meeting will be audio and video recorded. Please rise from the floor. Plagiariedips to the flag of United States of America. Two republics, one nation, under God, in the business of liberty, justice, and for all. Gentlemen, first quarter of business. We have some appointments today. As everyone knows, we have two fine young gentlemen, Brady Baldwin and Camden Reposo, who have been working for us through a co-op program and earlier the YES Program that have done excellent work around town. All their efforts are very much appreciated, and they are graduating high school. So we thought it would be nice. Selectmen Warner brought it up, and I totally agree that it'd be nice to give them some citations. And I'd like to ask them to stand up, introduce themselves, and maybe say a little short blabber about yourselves.
Yeah. I'm Brady Baldwin. I've been a Kushner resident all my life. Love Kushner. And this year, I'm graduating from high school, from Old Colony. It's great. And I've been working with the town for a co-op opportunity, and it's been great. Everyone's been so welcoming, so nice, and a lot of great people over here, and I want to thank all of you for what you do.
Thank you, Brady.
I'm Camden Reposo, also a Kushner resident, lived here my entire life, graduating this year too. My first co-op job, had a great time, great opportunity, good mentor, Dave. That's very welcoming, and I'd like to thank all you guys, too.
Thank you. I also like to say happy early birthday to Camden. Not only does he turn 18 this weekend, he also graduates high school, so he's got a big weekend ahead of him. Gentlemen, we put together some citations for you. I'd like to read them for you. Town of Akushnet Board of Selectmen, this is an official citation. Be it known that the Akushnet Board of Selectmen hereby extends its congratulations to Brady Baldwin, Old Colony Electronics, Class of 2024. The Board of Selectmen would like to recognize the hard work and dedication to the workplace that you displayed throughout this cooperative employment period. Your strong skill set and work ethic will prove for you to be an asset in any field of work you pursue. Congratulations on your accomplishments and best of luck in your future endeavors. Awarded this day, June 4th, 2024. And also to Camden Reposo. Be it known that the Akushnet Board of Selectmen hereby extends its congratulations to Camden Reposo, Old Colony Carpentry, Class of 2024. The Board of Selectmen would like to recognize the hard work and dedication to the workplace that you displayed throughout this cooperative employment period. Your strong skill set and work ethic will prove for you to be an asset in any field of work you pursue. Congratulations on your accomplishments and best of luck in your future endeavors. Awarded this day, June 4th, 2024. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. We appreciate everything that you've done for us around this town.
Thank you. Congratulations. Hold on. Congratulations. Hold on.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Keep up the good work, my friend.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Keep up the good work. We have a quick photo, like we usually do with... Do you have a camera phone?
Hey, Dave, why don't you come up here and grab a photo? Come on. I thought you were going to put on your nice other glasses. Get in here, Dave.
We can get a photo from this fine young gentleman.
I appreciate everything you've done for these young gentlemen.
They make it easy.
Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you.
Congratulations. Good job. Thank you.
Why don't we have everybody back up? Sidney's coming down a little bit of picture.
All right.
I'm right here.
Let's all face the other way this time.
It feels like Christmas Day at my house. Everybody's in their backs. Sidney will be like, "What?"
All right. Everybody smile.
Cheese. All right, one more.
Photo book.
All right, cheese. Wonderful. Good job, boys.
Thanks, guys.
Congratulations, guys. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Woodward and Curran Slocom Street, where new matters presented, votes may be taken. Before we pull up Woodward and Curran, I just want to mention, last meeting, we had asked to reach out to our reps and senators for a letter to send to the DOT in regard to transportation bond money, and I just want to let everybody know that Senator Mottigme did send his letter to the DOT, so that's one step closer. And just want to let everybody know.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I've talked to Jessica Caten and Paul Schmitz's office a couple times. She told us by the close of business, their business, which will probably be 5:00, the letter will arrive from that office.
Excellent.
And she's working with Strauss's office to get that letter, too.
Perfect. All right. A little bit we can get. I'll turn it over to Woodward and Curran. Thank you.
You want to introduce yourself?
Sure.
I mean, I know who you are, but people out of public don't... Carol, same thing.
Okay. So I'd like to thank the board for allowing us some time to talk about the Slocom Street Infrastructure Improvement Project. My name's Arco Leventis. I'm a project manager with Woodward and Curran. I was the project manager that led the design for this infrastructure improvement project. And Carol Harris here as well.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for having us here. I'm Carol Harris, also with Woodward and Curran. I'm the client manager for the Town of Akushnet, and I've been working with Akushnet for many years. Kevin has been through many projects with Kevin, and it's nice to see the new members on the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to let Ar connect the presentation.
So I gave you a handout of just some of the... Just to kind of highlight the overview of the project and the design and what it includes. On the second sheet, the project area is mainly... Or the majority of the work is being done on Slocom Street. On the west end of the project is bordered by the Akushnet River. On the east end, it's bordered by South Main Street, includes a little bit of the intersection in South Main. And then there's a little bit of work that goes into each of the side streets coming off of Slocom Street, just to be able to reconnect to some of the existing utilities. The work is being done to upgrade some of the aging infrastructure in Slocom Street. There's an existing water main that's over 100 years old. It's gas line. It's undersized. We're going to upgrade that from a 6 to a 12 inch. The existing drainage system is also undersized, and there's really not a lot of inlets for stormwater to get into the system at all. So we're going to provide additional inlets and increase capacity. And then the roadway itself is, you know, we've got some issues as well. The sidewalks are kind of in a failing condition. There's really no curb reveal. There's... The pavement's starting to fail. So the improvements are going to include constructing new sidewalks, adding curb, and new pavement, and then delineating parking. The water main improvements themselves, there's about 2,400 linear feet. There's a feed that comes in from New Bedford across the Akushnet River. We're going to connect to that feed and extend the 12-inch up Slocom Street, replace the intersection, the water main in the intersection of South Main Street with 12-inch and reconnect to the 10-inch that's there, so that you guys will have a brand-new 12-inch main running up, and it can serve as a secondary feed or a better secondary feed from New Bedford. As part of that work, we'll connect all the side streets with new 8-inch ductile iron main and add new control valves at those intersections where we're connecting and also along the main line. So there's not a lot of isolation control right now, so DPW has our dime kind of isolating the area, so this will provide an improvement there. All the hydrants that are in the area will be replaced as part of the work, like along Slocom Street. And then the water services themselves will be replaced from the main to the curb stop, which is just a valve valve kind of right near the property line just before, just kind of at the back of sidewalk essentially. For the storm drain improvements themselves, the existing system is a combination of like 10- and 10 through 24-inch pipe. We tried to video it. We had limited success. A lot of the reason is because there's not a lot of access to it. It can't be maintained. There's a lot of debris in it. We were having a hard time cleaning it out. But what we could see, we saw broken pipe. We saw a lot of issues. And then when we got ahold of some drawings that showed what the, you know, what the pipe sizes are and did an evaluation, it's undersized. So we did a... We did an evaluation of the existing system with four different storms, storm conditions, and decided that the 10-year storm is the one to design to, and that does meet the NASTOT standards. So that's what this is designed to, is designed to, a 10-year storm event, which is essentially about, just a little under, about five inches of water over a 24-hour period. The existing system itself, there's only two inlets, or I'm sorry, three inlets up near Niab, and then a couple of catch basins down by River Street. So we're going to add a bunch to try and capture some of that water that's coming down the hill. We're planning on installing 27 additional catch basins along the way and 18 new manhole structures, so that there's plenty of access to this, so that it can be properly maintained going forward and inspected. As far as the roadway improvements go, they're... The post... Or the design has us excavating the sidewalks on the north and south side of Slocom Street, replacing them with new concrete sidewalks, adding granite curb to the whole run, installing... You don't currently have, at most intersections at least, any handicap accessible ramps, so those will be incorporated into this new project. The road is going to be reclaimed, so the pavement's going to be ground up. It's going to be regraded, so that we can get some curb reveal, because there's really not a lot there. And then once the... Once that road has been graded, it'll be repaved and then striped. And on the south side of the road, where a lot of people just kind of like park up on the sidewalk, we're actually going to stripe out designated parking stalls. I know it's probably not really visible from your handout. I did bring some... This is... I don't know that'll show that well. These are the... These are the plans, just to show how the limits work. So it's just bringing, you know, redoing the pavement in here. All of this work in here is new sidewalks. These green areas are really just how we're going to blend back into the yards, because there's going to be a little bit of damage as you excavate that, so we'll restore that. And it just goes up Slocom Street, all the way up to... Up to South Main Street, and the sidewalks will end right at the intersection there. And then this is just a cover-up, or to pave over some of the water main work that we're doing in that area. As far as anticipated schedule, that's obviously dependent on whether the project gets awarded, and it also is dependent on some of the things from the contractor, as far as, you know, when they can get materials in, how they're looking to phase it, certain things like that. But we're anticipating if the project gets awarded by September, or in time for construction to begin in September, the water main improvements will be constructed this year. And then the storm drain improvements will probably happen in the spring of next year, towards the summer. Be completed around that timeframe. Then they'll start the roadway restoration work, and that'll probably carry from the summer through the fall, and it'll be done next fall.
Excellent. Selectmen, I guess, right now, you had a massive hand in putting this together, which I very much appreciate. And I know you spent a lot of time going through specs and making sure this fit the standards that we needed it to. Feel pretty comfortable with it?
Yeah, I think it's, you know, it's probably the biggest, most important, in my opinion, project, infrastructure project that this town has seen over the last couple of decades. It's very much needed to upgrade that main line from the city of New Bedford there, as some of our other ones would need to be done eventually in the future as well. But Slocom Street, those residents have been looking at a project and talking about this as most of them that I've spoken to for anywhere between two and three decades. So it's time the town take the initiative to do this roadway. The sidewalks in the roadway are complete and utter disaster. You gentlemen know you drive up and down the street. It's just... It's dangerous. There's a lot of seniors that live in that area, this village area, that use the sidewalks. Unfortunately, they can't use the sidewalks because of the condition they're in. And the water main, as I had mentioned, is actually 115 years old, and God knows what that looks like, right? And I've talked about this several years back, that the town has roughly 43,000 feet of 100-year-old plus water pipe in the ground. So is it sexy? Is it, you know, what everybody wants to see? No, infrastructure projects never are. I know that a lot of people in the community have read and seen articles in other states in the cities and towns of water main breaks and a complete and utter disaster it creates within a municipality. So good for us if we can get this new town meeting, get this project rolling. It's a significant upgrade, as I had mentioned, too, upsizing the water main for additional development possibly in that area and further upland into different neighborhoods. So it's something that's very much needed to have that additional water capacity. And the storm drain issue is, again, a complete and utter disaster. It's long overdue. I'm delighted. I would hope that town meeting supports this project, that town meeting on June 17th. We have a substantial amount of funding from APPA. We have a letter that you just noted that Mr. Woner worked on with Mr. Mottigme's office. I've spoken with Rep. Schmid's office. Those letters will all be in conjunction, and hopefully we'll get that additional $1.5 million free lease from Transportation Bond in the article that we have for town meeting for the borrowing we won't need to utilize.
Excellent.
That's my hope. I think it's the board's hope that we don't need to do any kind of borrowing to do the project, and I would say 90% of that project will be done without taxpayer dollars. So...
Even better.
Internal taxpayer dollars, right? I think that's the key. So with that said, I mean, I'm... Long overdue. Like I said, I can't wait. Hopefully, everything's approved, and I can't wait to give those folks what they've been looking for for such a long time, which is actual curbing sidewalks for everybody to be able to walk down to the river park and visit. And just due to a little tour and laps, we do have a lot of sidewalk infrastructure in the center of town, so it would be great to complement it down to the riverfront. And like I said, hopefully this project is accepted at town meeting, because that's where it needs to be accepted, is that borrowing article. But I'm going to advise everybody at town meeting, it's... We would hope not to have to utilize a borrowing article, right? And if we get that $1.5 million Transportation Bond built, I don't think we'll need to borrow anything.
Excellent.
So that would be a huge plus.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Kevin, thank you for your work on this. I mean, I personally, for the presentation, I would like to have seen like what an after would look like, you know? And I know you guys have probably the capability to do that. You know, we worked on Wood Street, on the bridge.
Yep.
The Slocom Street Bridge. I would like to personally, I don't know if you've explored it, but the aesthetics of that carried up with ornamental lights or something along those lines. I mean, I would be disappointed if it was just a very vanilla, you know, outcome. I think there's always opportunities to put a little bit of shine on it, something, especially a project of this magnitude, if we can make it look, you know, above and beyond just a cookie cutter. I don't know if you've explored that or not, but, you know, I guess it would have been nice to see in the presentation, the final presentation, what it could look like, what would look like.
And we would be able to do that. If you would like, we could prepare something for you to either put on your website prior to town meeting or over town.
I think so. At least for me, I'm a visual learner, you know?
In fact, we're going to say, if you would like to put this presentation on the website, we can forward it to Jamie tomorrow, and you could put that on the website for informational purposes for preparation for town meeting.
I look at, you know, what was done in New Bedford on Cogswell Street by Antonio. It's kind of the same vibe, right? There's telephone poles, we know that, but I think they did a really nice job of making that look aesthetically pleasing. So that would be, you know, if I had any input on that, it's all said and done.
We did have conversations about underground utilities, getting rid of the lines, but EverSource, when we were talking to them, it was crazy.
Understood.
Crazy, crazy money, so we could explore that, you know, different kind of pole setups and things of that.
More ornamental in nature versus, you know, actually carrying out the electrical, but something to give it just a nice, whether it's at the entrances or, you know, something to give it a little bit of pizzazz. I'm sure you've worked on projects like that. It'd be great.
We could surely have that dialogue. We have a good relationship with a gentleman from EverSource, so we could surely have that dialogue with him, once we figure out what it is that we're looking to do.
Sure.
Maybe we can get EverSource to help us out with the project, right? As far as the street lighting and power lines go and things of the like, right?
Yeah.
To keep this within a budget, that was the difficult part. We did get some favorable bids, thank goodness. The overall number that was originally put out by Woodward and Curran, as they will tell you, I kind of jumped out of my seat saying, I don't see that kind of a price tag, right? It's just ludicrous right now what everything costs, and they don't control that. I was delighted to see some of the bids come in. And again, like I said, I don't want to have to do a borrowing. I never want to do borrowing. We got a great track record of doing things in this town without borrowing, right? Big project stuff without doing borrowings. I'd like to try to continue that trend on behalf of the taxpayers of Akushnet, so... But everything's being... What the nice part about Slocom Street and the water main, like I said, it's nothing sexy about a pipe that lays on the ground and nobody can see, and so you have a contamination problem, right? Or a water main break problem. The nice thing about this project is we've communicated with Woodward and Curran that every side street will have a up-sized spigot going out. We'll dig what? What are you saying, like 10, 12 feet into each side street?
Yeah, we're carrying it at least... It's on average about 25, 30 feet into each side.
So that's... That up-sized pipe will be there. They'll be put in, so that in the future, we don't need to go back to Slocom Street and stop playing around with a brand-new road, brand-new sidewalks. That was all pre-planned. I mentioned the hydrants that are on the south side now, where we do allow parking, which we know when wintertime comes, parking bans and everything else. I've had a conversation with them. There's actually two hydrants that we're easily able to relocate just around the corner on the side streets, eliminates that no-parking ban for the folks on Slocom Street. I kind of forewarned them is, do you realize how bad we would look as a board if we told everybody, you can't park on that side of the road anymore? Because there was discussion about changing the side of the road. We've been doing... I told them, we've been doing this for decades. You can't do that to the folks on Slocom Street. And we decided it's simple enough, relocate the hydrants around the corner, right? 50 feet and have a nice day. They're still easily accessible for fire department, emergency services. That's all incorporated in the project. So I think it's a great project. I agree with Select and Woner that maybe we can do some different things to make it look a little bit aesthetically, a little bit nicer. We'll try to figure that out on our end right now, moving forward, right before they get too deep into construction with sidewalks. You said that's summertime next year, right?
Yeah, I mean, they'll definitely be working on the underground infrastructure before they hit that, so.
Excellent. I like how each street's going to have its own shut-off, too. So, and like you said, in the future, if we do have to update any of the side streets, it's easily accessible, and we don't have to have the DPW running up and down the street looking for a shut-off.
We had a major water main break on Saucier Street, probably 18 months ago, winter months. I believe it was in the winter months. Anyway, there's no snow underground, but winter months, and it was a major water main break. And I remember showing up on site, and we had DPW staff running around the neighborhood, every side street, trying to hit gate valves. They're all frozen, and you can't shut down water supply. And then what happens when you find something, you're way out in Timbuktu, and now you've just shut down 200 or 300 homes versus 50 or 60 homes that were at the problem that occurs, right? That's why all of our stubs go into side streets, build their brand-new shut-off valves. If something happens in the side neighborhood, you can easily just shut that one off and shut down that portion of the neighborhood. We'll figure that out, looping now with Dan, and we'll work with the DPW director on future gate valve replacements and water infrastructure replacements. But this is the start of a much bigger thing I'm going to leave for the Town of Akushnet.
I agree. Good work. Any other gentleman?
Nothing.
I have a question. Like, what I'm listening to is the storm drains.
I just need you to say your name and your address for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Cindy Savela, Halfway Road.
Perfect.
I worked for an environmental company, and worked for Woodward and Curran, and just happened to be here tonight. But the storm drains, all the pollution that had gone in to cleaning up the Akushnet River, you know what I mean? Like you're saying, I agree, cleaning it up, that makes sense, so the flow doesn't go back into the river at some point and contaminate it again.
Absolutely.
Does a lot of work. A lot of work.
Well, the basin, the outflow is underneath of the bridge, right? And that's why you heard Art say about the additional basins.
Yes.
And the additional manholes, because we don't have sufficient basins and manholes to get in and start cleaning those drains out, so all of that debris is getting into the river.
Exactly.
Right? It's being forced, and a lot of it's been clogged up, but that pipe's been in the ground for God knows how long, 30, 40, 50 years, right? At least now, we have a way to get into the storm system and maintain cleanliness of it. One, it'll prevent flooding, future flooding, right? And two, it'll keep that river cleaner.
Absolutely.
It's part of our MS4 permit that we do storm-based cleaning, and that's exactly what we'll be able to do, is we'll be able to get in there and clean those basins out before that debris and garbage really gets down into the river. So it serves multiple purposes, getting that Slocom Street car done.
I was impressed to see that many of the storm drains, because it is needed.
Excellent. Well, thank you both very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
If you could follow up with Jamie about getting a copy of this.
Yes, go forward that. And would you like some type of a rendering that you can post on the website also?
We would.
Yes, please.
I think that would help for us to post it on our website, and then also maybe we'll do some kind of a little pod thing at the... In the hallway at town meeting that'll show a little bit of that, some pictures of what it looks like now, what it's going to look like then.
That'd be fun.
Give people an idea.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, golf, two greens, triplex, mowers, review of matters presented, votes may be taken. We have Mr. Tibbles here. Hi, Steve.
Good evening. Thank you for having me this evening. I don't know, I think it was back in December of 2021, at a golf committee, we discussed operating of equipment, in particular, our greens, triplexes. We came across that opportunity in June, actually, June 8th of 2022. The items on the agenda this evening are the two actual triplexes that are ready for delivery. The golf committee met and decided that they would like to pursue a five-year dollar buyout lease for these two items, and they asked me to come for you today and request that be the way in which these were financed slash paid. you today and request that they, that be the way in which these were financed slash paid for. It is in, was included in the 2025 budget. Actually was included in the 2024 budget because we had been given indication that they would have been delivered in August of 2023, but unfortunately that got delayed till this June. The tentative delivery date is June 17th, Monday after Father's Day.
All right. So if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, just one quick. So these are indeed the ones that we've been talking about for a couple of years.
Yes, they're, we have, we have two different types of triplexes for two different cutting purposes. We have two triplexes that we use to cut collars and approaches and tees. Those triplexes are set at a specific height and then we use two triplexes to cut greens, which are set at a different height. These particular units are hybrid units. The reel motors are electric, which eliminates a significant amount of hydraulic hosing and the opportunity for hydraulic leaks. And they're charged through the, the electric motors are run through the alternating system on the triplexes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
We talked about this a little while back, I think, to Steve, and I don't remember if it was because we've done quite a bit of purchases of equipment over the last few years. Was this one the one that we talked about? I think it was Mr. Flynn was here from the golf committee, chair of the golf committee. We talked about not leasing and purchasing? Or in your saying now that the leases were built into the fiscal 2024 budget and that's been built into the 2025 budget for leasing? So my question would be is, what are the, what's the cost of the two triplex mowers that we're looking to purchase now? And what's the cost of the lease over the five year? If it's a five year lease plan, what is the interest cost? And what's the additional cost to a triplex mower? So if a triplex mower is 30 grand, if we lease for five years, is it an additional five or 10 grand in lease and interest cost? Which would equate to 10 or 20 grand in interest payments? Because that's a bad deal.
The, the cost for the two units, as quoted, is 121,403. So each unit is approximately $60,000 a piece. The breakdown for payment, they give you a, you can choose a monthly payment system, which would have been $2,466 a month. After discussing that, we looked at a single annual payment, which because of the financing cost of money would save us a little bit. The single annual payment is 28,600 over the five year period.
28,000 what?
28,600. So if you take 28,600 and multiply it by five, you look 143,000 total.
So about $22,000 in interest, 20,000, 21,000, right? In interest?
I believe when.
That's like 20% interest.
I don't have.
121 at 10% is 12 grand, right?
First payment, two third days after.
So we're doing that.
I have the percentage per se in these documents, but that was the, that was the term for the dollar, the dollar buyout.
Both machines needed? Having two brand new triplexes or what's the deal with the two that we're using now? The age of the two?
We have act, well, we have three triplexes that we use to cut greens with now. One is, I believe, 28 years old. It's a diesel John Deere triplex. The other is 19 and I believe the other is 15. And we're going to be trading in those three units and replacing those three with these two.
What, what, do you know what the trade in value is on those three machines? For all three of them? Is it five?
Really, there's not a real significant trade in value on them because of their age. What we're going to possibly be able to do with them is Toro will take them to auction and anything they get over a hundred dollars gets returned to us. But a 28-year-old John Deere diesel triplex isn't going to get you much of anything. Neither is the 22-year-old. They don't make parts for a lot. That's one of the reasons why we decided to replace them is we're having a difficult time getting parts and major things we're wearing out, such as hydraulic motors, such as hydraulic pumps and so on.
Right. I was just trying to figure out if the trade in value would knock off some of the interest costs, right?
Um.
But it does.
I don't, they don't, there's not a significant residual value in the ones that we're trading into to have that type of impact on, on the financing costs.
The golf committee ever consider selling the things outright ourselves?
Um.
As surplus equipment, we do it.
The topic didn't come up specifically. You can try to sell them yourself. Again, I, you know, this is just my opinion, but I don't see too many people out there having an interest in those machines at their age. The other problem with those machines is those machines are cutting with a nine or 11 bladed reel. Now you're cutting, because of the, the lowering of heights, you're now cutting with 14 and 15 inch reel, or 15, 14 and 15 bladed reels. So you can get, you know, a closer clip rate, you can cut lower, you can get a finer cut. So I don't believe they even make 14 or 15 bladed reels for those new, older machines. So not only would they, you know, if they were trying to upgrade it, you'd be buying something that's not going to be able to give you the performance you want out of, and be able to make you compete.
So the deal is a five-year lease?
Yes.
At the end of the five-year lease, we buy each one of those, those two triplexes for a buck and we own them forever?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I personally, you know, I'm, I'm like you, I'm not a big financing person, but this was the direction that the golf committee wanted to go. So I told them I'd be more than happy to come and present it.
Second one?
You've covered it.
Is there a motion to approve two greens triplex for the golf committee for a five-year lease with a $1 buyout?
So moved.
Second. All who's in favor?
Aye. Mr. Tibbles, can you do the board a favor and put together a list of over the, like the last five years, seven years, 10 years, whatever you can do? I know you're pretty good at keeping track of everything that we've done. Can you put a list together of everything that we've won?
Everything, I can give you a list for the past, well, how long have I been here? 20, well, 23.
Yeah, I, so, so like the last five or 10 years, right?
Last five, 10 years?
Yeah, capital list of things that we've purchased. I have some, some information that I can go down and talk to you about. I just, yeah, I'd like to see that. I mean, spending a lot of money on equipment, I understand some of his agent, but I also understand that we desperately need a clubhouse. So we can't be blowing all of our money that's in reserve because I think we need to start talking about that and saying, how much of that reserve do we fund towards a clubhouse?
Well, I, I agree. It's, you know, I'm, I'll be the first one to admit that I'm the expense center. I spend money so we can make money. And what I've been trying to do is to keep us competitive and keep us to where we're not, you know, spending significant amounts of money on equipment repair. Things in technology and industry are changing so quickly that in order for us to keep up, to keep our competitive edge, we have to make that decision, whether it be a, you know, three-year equipment rotation either, or a five-year equipment rotation. But you have to keep that, I don't want to call it momentum, but you have to keep that progress moving forward if you want to, if you want to continue to compete and, and beat other people in your market. But I will have that, put together that list for you and, and have that available. I probably can do it off the top of my head, but.
Nah, it's good. We're done.
Some people here.
I think, I think you can put that list together for the board and we can look at it. And we have a lot more discussions. Just, it's driving me insane that we've talked about a clubhouse. I know I've mentioned a clubhouse before, probably 10 years ago, right? And it's fallen on deaf ears. And I don't like what I see. And I think we need to take a change of course for the golf course, no pun intended, and move in a different direction, right? And that's up to this board right here to make that decision. Okay. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tibbles. Next up, we have a press release from Senator Montigny. Selecton Woner, if you'd like to speak about it.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring this to your attention. That there's legislation that's being considered, that was passed by the Senate, it's going to go over to the House, which would essentially prevent municipalities from stealing the equity of people whose homes are in tax title. You know, we're owed taxes to them. That's what happens in a number of municipalities is they'll go up for auction and they'll keep all the money, right? So they pay off the debt, but then the municipality keeps the auction, you know, keeps the money that's generated at the auction. There's been law, there's been court cases that have said that's essentially illegal. So Senator Montigny's working on that in the legislature. But I think as a municipality, I'm proud of the fact that we haven't been that heavy-handed. I think the most recent, the last couple of years, we had close to, I think it was a half a million dollars in unpaid taxes. We put out notice after notice after notice. And I think we, Mr. Kelly, from close to being correct, we almost collected 100% of that, correct?
It's about 49,000, let's say.
Right. So I think, you know, as a town, good for us for not taking that heavy-handed approach. And I think, you know, whether it's water shut offs or abatements or, you know, medical, we've been, I think, really good about giving people the benefit of the doubt and trying to make it work. You know, we see what's going on with the governor and, you know, emergency shelters and people, you know, trying to address homelessness, which I think is amazing. But keeping people in the homes that they own is probably the best defense against homelessness and people requiring emergency shelter. So I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention and say thank you to Senator Montigny for, for taking this important step for this legislation.
Agreed. I think a big part of that too is like you had mentioned, to go from a half million dollars to 49, is, is a pretty significant collection. And these people did indeed get to stay in the house. And that's huge because a lot of the issues we're dealing with and the residents of this town are dealing with have to do with not being able to afford a lot of things.
Right.
And there's no reason to take what's left if you don't have to, you know, it's unnecessary.
We've done, we've done some incredible work with our residents, as Mr. Woner has alluded to over the years, stemming all the way back to, I believe it was 2015, where we've created a program. Selecton Woner and I were on the board back then. We created a program where it's, it's, you can't afford to pay off the full amount and we're going to work with you over a longer term plan. And you could pay us off small dollar amounts to get to that goal, right? And it was a very successful program back then. And I'm 100% in support of this, this letter because it'd be a shame that that's what people are actually trying to do, right? I don't even know if it's legal for them to do it, but.
Hopefully with this letter and reading through it, not anymore if it was.
Correct.
It's good.
Hopefully it stops.
Excellent. Some good news. General, next we have a couple more vacation carryover requests. Looks like we have three total.
Three.
Yeah, one was added at the last minute, five minutes before the meeting. Did you get?
Yeah, I think I'm looking at that one, but nice to see it early.
Mr. Kelly, am I reading each individual employee or just going through the departments?
I just read, read the names.
Okay.
And what they're, they're requesting either buyout or rollover.
Okay.
Or both, or either or.
Yep. All right. So the first one is a dispatcher named Jesse Gomes is requesting to carry over 40 hours of vacation time to fiscal year 25 and.
Motion to approve Jesse Gomes, 40 hour carryover.
Yep. All who's in favor?
Aye.
And next one is Chief Richmond.
Motion to buy out 40 hours of vacation time.
Second. All who's in favor?
Aye.
And last one is Andy Bobola is requesting 10 days of vacation time carryover. But he does want to note that five of those days will be used on the second, so 7, 2 through 7, 9. It has been difficult to take time off as he has been involved in the operation of the department for five months without a clerk and five months of training a new clerk. So he has requested carrying over 10 days of vacation time.
Do you have money to carry over one week and buy the other week? Motion to carry over one week because he's going to use it effective immediately and motion to buy out one week for Mr. Bobola.
Second. All who's in favor?
Aye.
Next item, execute legal settlement agreements. Review of matters presented. Votes may be taken. Town of Akushnet and Akushnet Solar LLC and Town of Akushnet and Kushing Solar LLC, Woodbridge Renewables LLC. Mr. Kelly?
The litigation involves two projects that are, one uses access through another. There was litigation between some of the abutters and the solar companies as far as access to the sites through a road. There was determination was asked through the land court. We saw no reason to stay in the litigation because it really didn't involve the town. It involved the abutters and the solar companies. And our attorneys have reached this agreement where individuals that were involved in it are still involved in it, but the town itself is removed.
Excellent. Just need a motion to accept?
I need a motion to execute both agreements.
So moved.
Second. All who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Not a bad thing to get out of legal.
You've been nice enough to get into it.
Yeah.
Mr. Casper, you, you just, what I was thinking is, right, so what's the lesson learned in these two things, right? To make sure that whoever, you know, was it, were we being too heavy-handed? What was the, what was the reason for it? And so we can make sure that we're not repeating this again?
We were involved in it because we're a regulatory body and a lawyer representing the solar companies litigated against everybody. That's the problem. It really didn't involve us. It's a landowner versus landowner issue. So we ended up having separate discussions with the attorneys involved and we were able to come to an agreement to remove us from the litigation. There was also allegations that people were being encouraged to sue. So we made sure that the encouragers and the town were separate.
I think Planning Board Conservation now, from dialogue I've had from each of them chairman, they're both very respectful individuals. They get it. I've had numerous conversations over different kinds of litigation that the town's been being subject to and kind of given pep talk. So say it is, you know, let's try to be, work a little bit more friendly with certain people instead of just taking it to, I mean, if we're in the right, we're in the right, right? We stand heavy ground on that. And that's Planning Board, meaning Planning Board Conservation. I think some, a lot of this stuff stems back years, right? Some of this stuff. And, you know, the new, the chairman, Mark Francois from Planning, Ryan Rosenthal from Concon, they got a pretty good handle. I'm very confident in both of them being chairman of those two committees and boards that they have a good handle on how we move forward, right? I said, you know, we, we need to get rid of that, clean the slate and let's have a new vision moving forward where, you know, we just, we do what's right, but we don't take our executive powers too far, right? That's, that's kind of what I try to demonstrate with them. And I think they got a really good handle on it, right? If they, if they feel strongly about something, then we'll go to bat with you, right? But if not, let it go.
I also think a big benefit. I also think a big benefit is the fact that both Chairman Francois and Chairman Rosendi's have vocally said that they're working hand-in-hand on pretty much any project that could affect an outcome that could turn bad. And I, working hand-in-hand with two regulatory bodies, you know, is very important, especially when there's wetlands involved, when there's.
Putting that platform together, right? We talked about it a while back, and I said, it's one, we don't need to create the wheel and spend tens of thousands of dollars. It's a piece of paper with a checklist that everybody needs to look at, and everybody needs to say, okay, this is what it is. I think we put something together. It's a little bit more than the one sheet of paper, but it gives somebody an idea when they come in, what they need to do, right? And Planning Board shouldn't be given final approval on any project until it's gone through that checklist. And everybody signs off, and they understand what is required from everybody. Then Planning Board would say, okay, we're done, everybody's good, have a nice day, final approval, right? But when you've got one organization giving final approval before they've gone through the Ringo in a DBW, whether it be water sewer connections, conservation, building deposit, whatever it may be, you know, the cart's getting in front of the horse all the time, and that's what creates this kind of litigation and problems for us, the town. And quite honestly, you know, I've, I've told them, and I've told numerous people in the town, the Board of Selectmen control town council, right? So if it doesn't stop, the Board of Selectmen will make it stop. That's, that's.
Absolutely.
With buck stops is with us, right? So it's our budget, will determine where we're going to be spending money on town council, what we're going to defend and what we're not going to defend, so just do your best not to create conflict in litigation. I think both of them are tremendous in understanding and working with proponents of all different developments, so.
Communication is.
Kudos to Chairman Francois and Chairman Rosendi.
We're in the process of discussing four other litigations where we're looking to do the similar type of thing and get rid of the chairman and town council that are working with my office. Also, Mr. Sullivan at the Planning Board developed not only that list, but we've got a consensus that we're not going to have intermittent constant enforcement, where you tell somebody something's wrong, and they fix it, and then they come back, and then you say, oh, no, but this is wrong, too. So we're getting to the point where someone will come in and they'll have an evaluation of the whole project, not these dance of a thousand cuts.
Yeah, we don't need to drag it out to six or seven meetings, and, you know, having spent a good amount of time at other board meetings, it's, this is a violation, this is a violation in past practice, and you can just see that frustration leads to situations like this, so absolutely. And Paul Sullivan, he, I was over in Planning today, he cleaned that office up incredibly super-organized, and I think that's a big part of it, too, being able to just pull files and go for it, reference them. I think should be pretty smooth sailing if we stick to it.
As Mr. Gasper said, it's a whole new roster of personnel.
Yep. Stop fresh. Excellent. Next one. Gentlemen, we have fiber optics and cameras. Review of matters presented, votes may be taken. IT has asked us to put some new policy in place for the town. Essentially, this streamlines, now that you know that we have fiber pretty much everywhere in town, it's a lot easier having everything under one umbrella, but we'd like to insert some new policy for the town. And it reads, "Any and all networking devices are considered sole ownership of the Town of Akushnet, therefore, any damage, manipulation, obstruction, or alteration of said devices will be subject to disciplinary action, including but not limited to termination of employment or illegal action. The IT department under jurisdiction of the town reserves the right to block or disconnect any device that is determined not to belong to the town's internal network, of which may cause interference with other devices or pose as a security threat. The IT department is allowed to access any location that houses a network device in town. Notice will be given to employees prior when access to networking equipment is needed, and the devices may include routers, firewall, switches, bridges, access points, access control systems, phones, printers, computers, and servers, cameras, and any device connected via Ethernet or Wi-Fi. Is there a motion to adopt this policy?"
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I, if I could do an announcement on behalf of IT, I've gotten a brief summary from our IT, Nick, Tony, and I know Lucas helps us out. It says, "I am happy to announce that the Town of Akushnet has been awarded two-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars of eligible, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand for the fiscal year 2024 Community Compact Municipal Fiber Grant Program. This is a very competitive grant, as all cities and towns across the entire Commonwealth are able to apply for it. The second round of award funding was marked as Akushnet's phase two for closing the town's wide municipal fiber loop for redundancy. We will be continuing from the current endpoint on Main Street at the golf course, picking up the Long Plain Museum, Fire Station Number Two, running down Lake Street to provide security surveillance and public Wi-Fi, then looping back to the schools on Middle Road to complete the town's loop. We are also running a lateral to the tower on Peckham Road, which shall provide a physical connection to all public safety buildings for radio communications. The Community Compact Grant requires a five percent local contribution. However, thanks to previously funded article for IT Capital and Infrastructure, we already earmarked the eleven-thousand-four-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars and forty cents, causing no extra strain on the town's current budgetary state." So I just wanted to reach out to the IT department. Kudos to everybody involved that's involved with the grant writing, Nick, Tony, Lucas helps with the installation, I don't want to leave him believing anybody else, those are the three names that I know off the top of my head. It's a great project. I know that we're looking forward to doing some security surveillance also at Lake Street, keeping an eye out over there, adding Wi-Fi over there. It's, they've secured just under a half a million dollars in two years in IT budget. So congratulations to that staff. I'm extremely proud of you young gentlemen working on behalf of the Town of Akushnet and as hard as you have to securities grants, couldn't have done it without these grants, so kudos to that team.
That's great.
Excellent job. Next item of business, I don't think Dan and Kathy are going to make it for this one.
I can touch base on.
Sure. So we have paving and grass. Mr. Gasper, if you'd like to discuss some paving?
So we just put in, I know that we put a spending freeze in, however, Keene Road is something that's been on the construction, in my opinion, far too long. I've spoken with Dan, he's got enough money left, which is not a lot left, that's been pre-approved by the board to raise the surface of the road, finish off the storm drain system on Keene Road. It's probably like fifteen Gs, I think we approved that in the past, right? To get that project done and over it. I had a conversation with him, I met him out at Keene Road. We are now going to put in a six-inch overflow pipe from the basin that was installed. We're going to run it up Keene Road to Wood Duck, where there's a storm basin, we can connect it to that, and then it goes, outfalls into the river. Dan needs a little bit of money, which he's only got a little bit of money left. I think he said there's like seven thousand left in his road materials line item that was anticipated for the project, so I would just ask that we're allowed to continue and finish that up before year's end and expend the road paving line item in the road materials line item in the DPW's budget to finish off Keene Road. And what we're going to do is, we got enough money just to put the pipe by the saw cut where we've ground up the road and regraded the road, and then when the new fiscal year comes up, we'll extend it the rest of the way up. Keene to hit that pipe, but I want to get them outside of the paved area so we can finish paving that off and make that road right, because it's been sitting there for far too long, and I've heard a lot of residents complain, and I'm trying to address the residents' concerns.
Absolutely, yeah.
So is there a motion to allow the DPW to expend road paving and road materials in their budget?
Second.
I'm sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's good.
I should have said, I'll make a motion. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It was a long year.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Ah, man, I don't know what's up with grass.
Grass, actually, I was going to touch base, we were trying to avoid having the younger kids out on Lake Street cutting the grass, and I was driving by Saturday, and they must have read my mind, because they were doing it Saturday. We were going to talk about Lake Street, and just making sure, we didn't have the younger kids in the street trimming up and stuff like that, but they did do it.
It's technically there for landscaping around the buildings, and as far as any grass cutting along the roadways, like further along the entranceway to the library, et cetera, I've talked to our insurance company, and it's supposed to be the DPW that does it. Yeah.
So moving forward, I would, I would, if possible, I would like a motion to have the DPW take care of the grass along Lake Street or in the parking lot area there, just for insurance reasons and safety purposes.
And along any other guardrails for.
I mean, they already handle that for the, you know, they go down and they do their, their trimming of the roadways.
I think that it warrants a conversation with the DPW director on what are we doing with all our roadways, like the main car is right, we, so we don't have the employee that was, was operating the John Deere side boom mower that would cut all the brush in the high grass on the, we'll call it sidewalk area, which I know people at home laugh when I call it sidewalks, because it's not sidewalks, but they're grass sidewalks, and we have high grass all down Middle Road by the, the new library, Mr. Kelly just mentioned it, that needs to be done. I don't know if we have anybody else within the DPW that's trained to use the side boom mower, so that's a conversation we need to have with the director.
Before we do anything, we'll just sit down with Dan.
The Lake Street things, we whack this, instead, I use the case that you can't cut the guardrail with a side boom mower, right? So that's, that's legit. I'm more concerned about what the roadways look like, right? And having that, I haven't seen a side boom mower go out, so I just, I can have the conversation, Mr. Kelly can, whatever. We need to find out, if we don't have somebody who's trained to use the side boom mower anymore, then we need to figure out who we're training and put them back in that side boom mower and side cutting grass around the town, because it really is disturbing.
Yeah. Mr. Kelly, can you reach out to Dan and have a discussion about that, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
I can sit into it if you like, Danny.
Selectmen's.
You let me know. I'll let Mr. Warner go first, if he's got anything.
I don't have anything.
All right, well, as always, this time of the year, I will say congratulations to the graduating class of 2024. You've made it. Contribute to society as best as you can, and to all the dads out there, I want to say Happy Father's Day. Be safe.
All right, and I have nothing. Our next meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, yes, sir.
On the next meeting, we're going to do the appointments list.
Correct.
And we're going to do the transfers, end-of-year transfers that we need to do.
That's a long meeting.
We're not going to put anything else on it.
When is the next meeting, sir?
June twenty-fourth.
Oh, we got a little, little, oh, a little spring break here.
In between town meeting.
Yeah, I didn't want to do a meeting the day after town meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I will post a meeting before town meeting, just in case any emergency item comes up, so we can take care of that before town meeting.
Yeah, we usually do that six, six o'clock, just six-thirty, whatever you want to do, just in case there's anything, flags out. Need a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman?
Do we have executive session?
Oh, I think you took care of it with the policy.
Okay, yep, so we can skip over the executive session?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We have adjourned.